All right, it's Tuesday, March 8th, 1 o'clock. This is a Prescott City Council Study Session. We have roll call, please.
Mayor Good.
President.
Mayor Protem Rusing.
Here.
Councilwoman Hall.
Here.
Councilman Montoya.
Here.
Councilman Sishka.
Here.
Councilman Tenney.
Yes.
And the record will reflect that Councilman Moore is excused from the meeting.
All right, we have three items on our study session agenda today. We'll start with item A, presentation and update from Prescott Frontier Days World's Oldest Rodeo.
Thank you, Mayor, Mayor Protem, Council. Thank you for letting us give you an update on what's going on. Kind of a two-part deal. First is we're going to do an impact study that we've had done and what the World's Oldest Rodeo and the other events that go on at the rodeo grounds as well does for the community. So with that, I think Jim Rounds of Rounds Consulting Group is on the Zoom.
He is, yes.
And his firm specializes in economic development and including revenue forecasting, budget development, strategic planning and marketing, environmental economics, impact and market studies and litigation support. Mr. Rounds regularly provides advice to policymakers at the Arizona State Capitol, which he's been today, to mayors throughout the state, as well as city council members, county board members, other public and private sector leaders in the community. Jim has provided economic guidance to policy leaders across the country on matters of real estate tourism, economic planning, fiscal planning, criminal justice, education policy and economic impact modeling. We also have Luis Cordova. He will be doing part of it. Luis is the vice president of Rounds. Luis is a company specialist in economic and fiscal impact modeling, forecast modeling, graphical design, computer technology, networking, social media management, and coordinates web-based activities and research from company-specific assignments to survey development and processing. So Luis, you and Jim, you guys have the floor, and thank you again for letting us do this.
Thank you. I think Jim wanted to say a few words.
He's on.
Yeah, can you hear me okay? Yes.
Yes.
I apologize for not being there in person. I literally will have to be running out to help a really good piece of legislation pass and to stop a really bad piece of legislation from passing. And that seems to be the lion's share of the work at this point in session, but I think we're going in the right direction. There's a lot of local government impact issues that we're looking out for as part of our work for the league. I wanted to, you're in good hands with Luis. Luis is the best economic modeler in the country by far because he's helped us develop the most complicated and thoughtful economic model that we've seen in any study out there. And it just hit me that statement's probably going to cost me some money. So anyways, you're in good hands. I wanted to jump to a particular, I wanted to, just to participate briefly because I wanted to cover some Luis's last slide. You don't have to jump to it, but when, when we took on this project, this is one where I, when, when the project is, when the project is very interesting, I tend to ramble a lot. And what was great is that the entire team was rambling a lot at the beginning because there are so many different opportunities. From here, been there, it's been a while though since I've been there for the rodeo. And the impact, I think, is something where it hasn't been fully captured in the past, but the opportunity going forward is so massive. And how we like to look at it is Luis is going to give you detail on kind of an annual basis, what the last year provided, what kind of growth we can be expecting. But when you take a look at the 10-year impact with some very modest growth, and I think this growth is going to be half of what it'll be realized based on the plan, we're talking about Yavapai County getting eight and a half million dollars over that period. And again, I think the growth could be double. The city, 14.2 million, the state of Arizona gets a lot. Now, the reason that it's good to include the state of Arizona numbers is I feel like the state should be utilizing this as a tourism asset that gets promoted even more because it goes beyond just a local area benefit. This truly is something that puts the state on the map in a number of different ways. And I can't tell you how excited I was to see the plans going forward on expanding this. You'll be able to coordinate it with additional economic development efforts. You'll be able to do some business recruitment. The tourism opportunities, again, I feel like if we can demonstrate to the state the extent that your activity and your investment is bringing money into the state as a whole, we might be able to get additional investments from there. And I'm not even so sure that because this is economic development-oriented and it impacts a lot of different people, it may even be a candidate for a couple of grant opportunities that we offered to brainstorm with your team on and just see if we can identify some low-hanging fruit. My thought is if the federal government's taking money out of my kid and grandkids' wallet down the road because of what's being spent, I'd sure like that money to come back to Arizona, and I would love for some of this to be used there. But again, the dollar amounts that you're going to see are very large, but keep in mind they're a fraction of what they potentially could be if this is fully integrated into the region's economic development plan. Lots of money out there. It could even be not just state promotion or national promotion. This will be something where you can be recruiting potential CEOs that want to locate here from other countries, kind of like how the Phoenix area uses a Super Bowl as a little bit of an economic development tool. There's no reason that this can't be the Super Bowl for this area and help to add to the economic growth in the area, still maintain the character, but just increase incomes, increase tax revenue. And when you do these economic development projects right and you have a positive ROI like we calculated for this, you're basically spending taxpayer monies. And the reason that we started talking about ROI when we talked about investments is if you have a positive ROI for a taxpayer, it's like having a positive ROI for your business investment. The taxpayer will end up getting more money than they're being asked to contribute because of positive ROI, which means you can have a combination of reducing taxes and increasing services and investment in projects like this, and you have this upward spiral. And by no means is this the only way for the area to grow. I've been bullish on the region for a long time, and I've been enjoying seeing some of the business opportunities go from some of the other parts of the state where we butted heads with Flagstaff being one of them, even though I love to go there. Lots of business friendliness in this particular area, and I feel like this next decade is going to be one of the best ever. And the decade after that might be something that is just a complete game changer in terms of the scale of the businesses. But again, you can always balance economics with the area's culture, how you want to grow. When you have strong economic potential, you have choices, and you can have good public-private partnerships. So broad, just this is very broad stuff. Luis is going to cover the detail, but I did want to emphasize, I usually don't get this enthusiastic about talking about economic development projects, especially when it's late in the afternoon and I have to go down to the Capitol, which means I'm going to age a quadruple the normal rate for the next three hours. But in this case, I am super excited about what you're going to be looking at. And as the team goes forward, if you all need to brainstorm with us, even though our project will be concluded, be more than happy to spend whatever time is necessary as long as maybe we get a VIP ticket to the, the next rodeo and I can come down there and bring my wife and son. So that's all I wanted to say. If anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to entertain it. But again, you're in good hands with Luis.
Well, thank you, President Rounds. I think your proposal to try to integrate all of the Prescott Frontier Days economic plans with our statewide economic development projects, I think, is a very, very good one. And I know I've been meeting with a couple of groups that are working on economic development in Yavapai County, and I think bringing this up to their attention is worthy of adding that connection with statewide development. So thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Good luck at the Capitol. All right. Thank you, everybody. Mayor and Council, thank you for having me today. It's good to be here in Prescott. So just a quick synopsis of the analysis we conducted. We developed an economic and fiscal impact model to quantify the impact of the Prescott rodeo operations over the last year, so in 2021. And that includes the, all events that they held, they hold throughout the year. And then secondary, the second part is that we calculated the impacts of the expansion itself, of the planned expansion, and then how much increased activity, what that impact would be. So in 2021, the year-round, year-round events at the rodeo drew in about 81,500 visitors to Prescott. And the rodeo, rodeo and all events generated over $33.5 million in economic activity. And when you think of that, that's kind of like a GDP, so all the, everything that was purchased, you know, the respending of money throughout the local economy. So last year, the rodeo activities supported about 337 jobs around Prescott, and that includes, you know, the people who work at the rodeo, the people who work the events that the rodeo hosted, that included food vendors, that also included all the employees that are supported, you know, at the local restaurants and, and the bars here on Whiskey Row, that kind of thing. So in 2021, the rodeo activity created nearly $2.6 million in state and local tax revenues. And this includes everything from sales taxes to bed taxes, restaurant and bar taxes, state income taxes, which come back to the city as state shared revenues. And then the property taxes, that includes some of the employees, the, the earlier number you saw on jobs, so they, you know, they live here, so they pay a property tax. So when you break up the $2.6 million, 1.5 was collected by the state, 325 by Yavapai County, and the city collected about 800,000 just last year. So currently, the rodeo has plans for an expansion, and right now they're estimating about 20, you know, 15 to 20 million, but it could be more, especially, you know, with construction materials going so high and that kind of thing. So that 20 million is kind of like the baseline, and with 20 million, you generate about 268 jobs. The economic output generated by that is about 40 million. You also generate $14.3 million in labor income, and what labor income is, is the wages earned by the employees. And then it's about $2.4 million in state and local taxes, and those are generated by the construction sales taxes and those kinds of activities. Now, since the, the expansion is still in preliminary planning, it's, the, the level of new activity is kind of speculative at the moment. So what we did is we created an incremental model to do, to calculate, you know, what the impact is of every 10% increase in the annual number of visitors. So if you remember, we, it was about 81,500 visitors, so every 10% would be about another 8,000 visitors. So each 10% generates another 80 jobs, $3 million in wages, and about $8 million in economic output. The 10% increase also generates, excuse me, 340,000 in state tax revenues, 85,000 for the county, and 200,000 for the city of Prescott. And then this is kind of what Jim was talking about, how, what we did is we look at it over a 10-year period. And so this includes, you know, the expansion, so the construction impacts, and then it includes the visitation going up 10% a year, which is very conservative considering what they're planning to do. And so over a 10-year period, it's about $14 million for the city of Prescott. And that concludes our presentation. Any questions?
Councilman Montoya.
Thank you for your presentation. I just had a quick question. Are your numbers indexed for inflation, or are you just kind of projecting them out?
The, the 10-year impact, it is.
Okay.
But, and 2021 impact is based on 2021 numbers.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? We certainly appreciate your presentation, and it's pretty exciting to consider the improvements and the expansion and the ongoing support of the community, both our local neighbors, Prescott itself and, and Yavapai County. So I'm sure it's an exciting project and series of projects to upgrade the facilities there, and it's bound to generate much more interest and, and benefit for the city. Thank you. Thank you, Louis.
Thank both you and Jim, and great presentation. It really makes you excited. So if you would, go pop to the next slide. Last year on the 134th, you can kind of see that we generated 686 of the professional cowboys and cowgirls, and many of the top cowboys and cowgirls that are in the top 10 came to Prescott. So that's, that's always great. We're seeing that and we're hearing that from the, from the PRCA, that those cowboys are coming back. They like Prescott. We changed a few things. We fed them, we kind of winded and dyed them, if you would, on food, soda and water, but payout of $285,293.50 and 28,983 fans. Last year, I got to say that bringing the parade and the dance back was, we turned that corner and went down Whiskey Row and seen all those people at the courthouse, just about brought a tear to my eye from the 2020, so that was absolutely great. And all performances on the Cowboy Channel, we'll talk a little bit more about that as we go. Pre-pandemic, go to the next slide. We had to go back to 2019, but I think this goes to Jim's kind of, visitors from all 50 states in 2019, and we'll be there this year. And then you can look at international visitors, and I don't know if we have something from the Ukraine this year or not, hopefully maybe. But it speaks volumes to that state and to the, what he was saying, I mean, to the impact of this and where we can go with this, and how good it is for our area, Prescott, and everybody, all the citizens. Go ahead. So talking a little bit about this year, we are bringing something new. The attendance at the rodeo is capped at a certain deal, so you can't, and still folks want to buy a ticket and go. Well, how about the World's Oldest Rodeo Downtown Experience at Mile High Middle School Field? We're bringing in a hard-riding entertainment, which has those longhorns the kids can sit on, they saddle them, they take pictures. Wheelbusters or mutton bustin' down there, and some, of course, the bucking bull, and some goat tie-in and things like that. So kind of an expensive deal to bring in, but I think it's worth it for the community, and everybody on the board did too, so we did that. We're also bringing in a big screen, which, it's more of a big screen. It's the same person that does our video there at the rodeo has a truck-mounted big, big TV. So we'll stream the rodeo there Thursday night, Friday night, Saturday day, we're not sure what we're going to do Saturday night, there'll be a rodeo on, and Sunday night. We'll have some vendors down there, some food, and family-friendly, there will be some, obviously some vendors with some beverage and things like that, but I think it's just going to be an all-around super experience and get some folks that aren't able to or just want to bring their family and stretch out in a blanket, a great opportunity to have fun and, and enjoy it. So that's coming in 2022, and firstly, that's kind of a, something we almost did in 2020 to try to expand it, since we've talked about it, and for this year to be, come to fruition is just something I'm really, really excited about. So next one. So a little bit about this, and I want to say, the plan of the expansion and thing has not been brought to council, so it's not approved or anything like that. We have some ideas, some dreams, but we are moving ahead on the East End bathrooms. And as you can see, it's kind of hard to see that, but there's 25 women stalls, 28 men's urinals and stuff like that, but that's added on to that East End where they can come in the vendor area down below, or enhances our handicap ADA from the grandstands. That's going to be about a $600,000 investment, and PFD is putting in 400,000 plus. And we're working on getting, getting the rest of the money, but the plans are done, 99%, and we've talked to permits, run it through permits. Prescott will have a saying, okay, in the permit and all that, so we're doing it right. We're also possibly looking in near future pavilion in that vendor area where maybe we could bring a market down there, things like that, where we had a big covered area, just trying to think about things that we could bring to the grounds down there. Giving an enhanced entranceway in there because that is the main entry to the rodeo grounds, and maybe a tri-tip barbecue pit, so kind of some little things. We got plans there. Right now, if you go to the next slide, we are, we, the arena and the pens, we're getting very, very well-used, and so we have worked with Prefort, and we're bringing in a brand-new arena, adding a couple extra bucking chutes, so we'll have more, and we're adding mutton bustin' chutes, two of those. And we have to do that before the rodeo, before PRCA, but we'll have mutton bustin' for a few nights for the kids, which I think is so exciting. I know my grandkids just love doing that, so pretty exciting to be here. Enhancing the dirt, we got second-best dirt this last year. That's not good enough for us, so we're working really hard to make sure. We also, the women's breakaway, we tried that last year, it worked fantastic. That will be a full, full-funded perf and fully funded, just like, just like any other deal wide open, we'll have more women, women breakaway. Gives the women at least a couple of events to compete in, I think it's pretty cool, so. And they sure love it, and it's, it's been a big deal, and we'll be putting in, if you click that, you'll be a little, that shouldn't do, bottom slide, yeah. There's kind of a panoramic view of what, what's going on there, I hope you all can see that. But yeah, everything's graded to drain. We did a drone program, so the blades, they work off the vat, and you can drain everything to great, drain down, so put a lot of work, a lot of dirt in there. Next week, we'll be putting all the, all the pens, all the bucking chutes are there. We'll start putting it back together, which is going to be, okay, go ahead to the next one. This, this little adventure is about a half a million dollars' worth of investment for PFD between the panels and for the pens and for the arena. Dirt work, more water lines, we're going to put in water lines where they're frost-free so that we can keep things going longer during the year, we don't have to shut the water off. So we're just really doing it. We're doing the Cadillac version or the, or the Mercedes, I don't know what you want to call it, but we're doing it right. Next slide. Of course, this, every year, I mean, we, we give back to the community, and we've done a lot with our foundation, and they'll be out there, so that's going to be great. We're, we're close to 15,000 on the tough enough annually, and then Wrangler brings in another 2,500. All that stays locally here in Yavapai County, so that's, that's where we're at now. Before I go to the next slide, what we're working right, not right now, is with, we got a couple of bids from folks that design rodeo grounds like this or complexes like this. They actually go through and, and they get the outside view, they come to the rodeo, they do this, they do that. We're going to work with the fair, we're going to work with other folks and look at this and say, what's the best for this grounds that everybody buys into it? They'll do a 3D model, it'll be, we'll bring that back to you guys for your blessing, if you would. And then as we move forward on each project, each project will still come back to council that it's something you guys want to move ahead with, and we'll get her done because we got a lot of plans, and hopefully, working together, we can get all that done. And this is not, anything on this, it was not a money ask today, I promise you, it was just get you guys up to speed on what's going on, so. Any questions?
I'm just glad to see it. I drive by Ferris Street almost every day and saw all the grading going on and the removal of the old fences and pens and seeing all the new ones being delivered. It's clearly moving forward pretty, pretty quickly, and Frontier Days will be here before you know it, right?
Absolutely, we can't wait. Hope you all are there and enjoy it. We're looking for that 10% growth, we really are, we feel like it's, it's realistic, so. Thank you guys very much for letting us present.
Thank you, Chris, and thank you, Louis. Appreciate it.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you, guys.
All right, Councilwoman Hall.
I was just gonna, thank you, gentlemen, for fixing the restrooms, as lady who has to go to those functions for three or four or five days a week during the functions. It's nice that you guys are improving that. That's wonderful. Thank you.
Councilman Tenney.
These are, this exciting developments that you've got planned, first time I went to the rodeo in Prescott, I was 15 years old, and it's obviously a huge part of Prescott's culture. It's great for us as citizens of Prescott to have the opportunity to attend, but really impactful to me to see the, the effect that, the economic effect that the rodeo has on our area in terms of direct tax revenues and, and the other pieces that it brings. So I really appreciate that. Our partnership between the city of Prescott and, and PFD has been strong for years and looking forward to continuing that. Thank you so much for you and for the great presentation today.
Mayor Protem Rusing.
Thank you. I want to thank you for your presentation. This is really exciting. Prescott Frontier Days and the Fourth of July, I mean, there's such a unique activity. People come from all over to participate, and I was just going to say I can't wait for the Junior Bonner theme this year. Thank you.
If I could speak to that just a second?
Yeah.
It's so good to see right now, we just had a BD Bundy, the Chambers, the Downtown Partnership, Western Heritage, Fippen, Charlie Holl, Stuart Rosebrook, who his dad was a major player in the filming of Junior Bonner. We're all collaborating together, which is something incredible to me. I said it to the group the other day, I mean, this is absolutely exciting to see the groups in Prescott coming together to plan the events of that week, so that if Prescott, Chambers doing something, somebody else doing something to complement that, so there's a great, great deal going on here, and you guys are going to see more advertising, and it's really cool to be in Prescott and be part of this.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, I think with that coordinated marketing, not only will it increase attendance this year, but probably even more so the following year, because there'll be many more activities for visitors to be able to participate in. So a great plan. Very good. I think we'll move on to item B in our study session.
Mayor, I just, sorry if I'd like to. Chris, can you kind of elaborate a little more on how the cowboys are going to react to improved facilities here at Prescott Rodeo Grounds?
Just when you thought you were all done.
Well, I did, but it's okay, that's a great question. So I stay out there all week too, so I can tell you, I can't wait. But yeah, we're looking at a covered arena, and that would probably, in the planning stuff, that's going to bring in like a bunch of covered horse pins. And some of those guys spend 50, 60, 70,000, I think, at the Equafest. Equafest, when Roll Horse went for 78,000. So I mean, they want a good facility. And we fed them, we took care of them. And they're like, this is different Prescott. We can't wait to come back. So we're just, we're bending over backwards because those contestants, they make the show.
So what are you going to do with those old jockey quarters?
Hopefully, we can raise the ceiling. Yeah, that thing, the roof is crumbling. We'd really like to rebuild that and maybe work with one of the hospitals and get them to support us. And it is the Justin's Sports Medicine Room. That's where they work on them. So if you can imagine the six foot four cowboy sitting on a table and they say, stand up, we need to work on your knee. Not a chance. So it'd be great to get that fixed. And that's, that's a priority of ours to get that, that fixed and rebuilt, rebuilt to today's standards.
Well, you know, I've heard often that we have the world's oldest rodeo and the world's oldest rodeo grounds. And so it's really nice to know that you guys are really putting it out there to get the best of the best to come to Prescott.
We certainly are. And that's, that's kind of, that's been said many times. World's oldest rodeo will never take away from us. But if they take the world's oldest rodeo grounds and improve them, that'd be great. And that's what we're doing. That's our mission. And it's with the help of Prescott and a bunch of people around this community that we'll get this done. And it'll be a beautiful facility. Thank you.
Thanks, Chris.
Thanks.
Thanks again.
Thanks, Mayor.
Okay, now we'll move on to the discussion regarding requests for naming of the Prescott Centennial Center and the City of Prescott Facility Naming Policy.
Mayor and Council, as you'll recall, we had a discussion and brief presentation at the last study session on February 22 with regard to the city's facility naming policy. That policy was adopted via resolution back in October of 2021 and gives council discretion to review applications received for the naming of city-owned facilities to potentially name them after individuals in the community. At that meeting, we discussed applications received for Major Frank Shale Jr. And since that time, we have received additional applications for Major Shale as well as applications for former Mayor Marlon Kirkendall. We've received 37 total applications for Major Shale and 140 for Mayor Kirkendall. Over the last several years, the council has also approved naming of other city facilities, properties. Mayor asked me to look into this, and I did find council action in 1971, naming Ken Lindley Field for Police Chief Lindley via resolution. And then also, the Gray Sparks Memorial Activity Center was so named in 2002 via resolution as well. There was no policy in place at that time. That was just action that council took. So you have all had an opportunity to review the applications, as has the public. They've been posted on the city website. And today's discussion is for public comment and to also discuss the policy and how council would like to proceed with voting meeting item on March 22.
Thank you, Sarah. So I think when we kicked this off, the concerns originally when this policy was put into effect was to try to have some type of a reasonable policy to review and to justify proposals for naming of, whether it's streets or buildings or other city property. And I think the intention there was to try to reduce any potential controversy or maybe challenges within the public on preferences for such naming processes. However, I didn't think that it was intended to create competition between groups for trying to decide who had more support for naming of a particular facility. And unfortunately, I think in this particular situation, we're starting to get into that realm. So I know that the original group had proposed their naming of the Centennial Center. And now we have a second group that is coming forward to propose naming the Centennial Center for Marlon Kirkendall. And during the last council, there was an original proposal to name the Centennial Center after Mayor Kirkendall. And now we have this competing proposal for the same building. I know for me, and particularly, I think it's appropriate that when proposals come forward, they're directed at a facility that does connect the proposed person with a facility that connects with their historical achievements. And I have to admit the fact that the Centennial Center originally was the Antelope Hills Clubhouse. And it was part of the golf course. And when the south course was developed, having that clubhouse no longer made sense because you have two courses, and you need to have a clubhouse that can support both of them. So once that happened, that clubhouse facility became obsolete, and there was a proposal to demolish it. But because of the efforts of Marlon Kirkendall, that building was not only saved, but remodeled to be able to be used as a meeting facility for the city and other groups that wanted to utilize it. So let's keep the focus on that building by saying it's part of the golf course. It's not part of the airport. It happens to be near the airport, but it's not part of the airport. And I think from my perspective, Major Frank Shale, who was such a phenomenally heroic WWII pilot, his achievements as far as his recognition by the Flying Tiger Group in China, along with the United States government, was borderline Medal of Honor. When you get two distinguished flying crosses, it's the highest achievement other than a Medal of Honor that can be bestowed on a pilot. So recognizing Major Frank Shale with something that is connected with aviation, with the airport, I think is more than worthy. But I'm not, at least in my opinion, looking at the ex-golf course clubhouse may not be the right facility. So with that premise, I'll, we'll move on with considering the proposals that have come forward, and it's open for discussion. So Mayor Protem Rusing.
Thank you. I would like to just emphasize that we have other options to honor people rather than naming things after them. I like living legacies where you can form an endowment and have a scholarship with one of our local universities, colleges, like Yavapai Community College. And every year, a deserving student will receive a scholarship so that he can, he or she can continue in an area of study and give back to the community. And I always support that. But I'd also like to make another comment. Our last public building, the Adult Center, was named after a mayor, Rowley Simmons. And I just look at us naming another building after another mayor, two in a row. So it kind of looks like we're getting in a rut here. Thank you.
Councilman Tenny.
Mayor, I appreciated your comments a lot. I think you framed things really nicely. Major Shale was obviously a terrific hero. I appreciate the things that the city has done to honor him so far and that the private organization that's done research about him has done to honor him so far. I would be in favor of considering naming something after him in town. That makes sense to me. Perhaps at the airport, that might make the most sense, or a wall of fame at the airport, or something along those lines. We could consider that in the future. But I also think you framed it nicely that if we're to consider naming a city facility after someone, it ought to have some connection to that person in a significant way. And I don't know in this case that Major Shale and the golf course have a specific connection. But again, I would very much be in favor of exploring an avenue or proposal to name something at the airport after him, or have him highlighted in a special way, perhaps in the terminal building, et cetera.
Thank you, Councilman Shishka.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I admire both individuals. But this brings to mind a guy named Solomon in the Bible. And in Solomon's situation, he had two people come to him wanting the same thing. And I could just imagine Solomon being here today. And his solution probably would be, well, let's name half the building for Major Shale and half the building for Mayor Kirkendall. But he's not here. And I have to say that I really don't want to pick winners and losers. I admire both people. I'd love to find solutions for both people. I've had several people come up to me on the street and say, why do you have to change the name at all? So I have to tell you that I don't want the controversy that this may generate. And I would like to see us just have the Centennial Center remain the Centennial Center and honor those individuals in other ways.
Well, let's keep in mind that the policy that was adopted by the last council is simply a policy. No policy was in, was created prior to that. And I think it was primarily just to have some type of a policy to follow so that reasonable consideration could be, could be made. But, you know, they never even utilized the policy while it was in effect. So we don't even have to follow the policy if we want to modify it, amend it, or even eliminate it. So again, I think my concern was, the policy was intended to reduce controversy. But now we have the first situation where it's being applied, and we're dealing with controversy. So it's kind of working against itself. And I don't think that we should have a situation where we're trying to find out who gets more votes. So I know the Kirkendall group has generated a substantial number of supporter. And the Frank Shale group also had a substantial number of supporters. And I certainly wouldn't want to get into a point where this group had more votes than that group. Then we're working against ourselves as far as being able to honor these both worthy individuals. Councilman Montoya.
Thank you, Mayor. I guess, you know, it's funny, I, like a lot of members of council, I imagine I've had a lot of people bending my ear about this. And I was actually at my father-in-law's house talking to someone about this the other day. And I made the joke that I said, I've said to my wife that if anyone ever tries to name a building after me, don't let them do it. Because part of it is, I do, I'm sensitive to Mayor Protem's remarks. I think when you sit up on this dais, you get your recognition a little bit, you know? And it's not to take away from Mayor Kirkendall at all. I, I think the thing that gives me a heavy heart about this situation is that I would venture to guess that until the efforts of some folks in this room, that not many people knew about Frank Shale. And I think that's a crying shame. And I think, I just wonder, it's fine to say, well, we'll find something down the road for you. But we don't know. And I guess I just wonder about losing such a significant part of our history. And frankly, a war hero that grew up in this community. I just, it gives me a lot of pause to just say, and I understand that, Mayor, your point is very, very well made, that he's not connected to golf. And I understand that. And this is a clubhouse oriented towards the golf course and not to the airport. But man, I just, it makes me sad to think that we would not recognize this man and that we would look at something down the road. I don't know what that is. I don't know what that is at the airport. Maybe we can connect with the airport manager and find out. But I just, I, I went to Betty Burgoyne's house when I was running for office. And she said, she implored me to go. She said, come look at this. And I was, I was tears in my eyes by the sacrifice of this young man who grew up in our community. And I felt ashamed that I didn't know who he was. And I bet if you ask most people in Prescott, they don't know who he is either. And I think we ought to prioritize doing something about that. Thank you.
Well, I agree. I'd like to see some public recognition so that people could say, well, who was Frank Shale? And then either have that answered by whatever they're observing, or to be able to have some resource to be able to go and say, wow, what an incredible Prescottonian who sacrificed his life during WWII to, for people who were desperately trying to maintain their freedom from tyranny and totalitarianism. But, you know, I think we've allowed that recognition to be lost over the courses of the decades. And it's time that we resurrected it and be able to find some way to honor him. I'm just not sure if this is the right, the right place. So I want to make sure that the group there understands that I want to support creating some recognition, but without creating this type of controversy that we have here. And going back to Marlon Kirkendall, let's face the fact that if Marlon hadn't stepped in, that building wouldn't even be existing today. And anybody who's been a leader in this community, or any community, for long periods of time, is going to have their detractors and the supporters. No one can ever bet a thousand when it comes to political, economic development. Marlon's ability to generate economic development in the city, I think, was, no one could argue against his achievements there. And it's such a long period of time. Being the commander of the, of the reserve, Army Reserve Unit, there's just so many things that Marlon was historically involved in. And being able to have recognition of his achievements is also something that absolutely has to be done. Councilman Shishka.
Oh, no, I forgot to turn my thing off.
So the question now is, where do we proceed? Either I miss you or something happens.
Well, it looks to me like we have three options. Name it after Marlon, or Major Shale, or just keep it the same. And opt to find other ways to honor our citizens, these two citizens.
Well, is this, this is a study session, so we're not actually taking any action today. But I think we do have to decide whether we're going to move forward with a decision on naming this particular building, or take some other, some other course. Councilwoman Hall.
Saw you looking.
I haven't even pressed my button. Yeah, here, lady.
Didn't interrupt. One of the things I would say is, I absolutely agree. Both need to be recognized. to be recognized. I think that the Centennial Center has a significance in that it wouldn't even be there had it not been for our former mayor. And so, and I agree with the airport statement. I think that there are a lot of opportunities at the airport. And I think that's great. Maybe Robin can help us with that and trying to find something that's appropriate and that's available and that's probably even more significant and more memorable, especially with how, what are we, what's our 14th now in the country? How big are, 18th? 18th?
17.
17th. 18th, 17th. So
16.
Yeah. So hopefully with the airport, that would be my suggestion, is maybe we could put something together for our former mayor to nominate the Centennial Center for our next voting session. And then we can continue working on finding another alternative location.
Understood. Councilman Tenny.
Yep. Jessica summed it up fairly nicely. What I was going to say, although I'd like to piggyback on what Councilman Montoya said, I'd like to see something solid in terms of a proposal for Major Shield, so that it doesn't just go away. It doesn't, we don't, we don't miss that somehow. That's a legacy that should be maintained here in Prescott. So I like the recommendation a lot of Robin getting together with Betty maybe and exploring some options there, whether it's naming a hangar, or having a commemorative display in the terminal, et cetera. But I'd like to see that come to the council here in the next little while as well.
Well, I think probably the Kirkendall group ought to be invited up to at least make their case. We haven't heard from them directly. So Patrick, do you want to address the council?
Mr. Feldmeyer will be speaking. Mr. Mayor.
All right, Mr. Feldmeyer.
And Mr. Mayor, would it be okay if I also asked former councilman, I think that's the correct term, formal councilman Blair to come up to discuss a little bit of the history there? After he's finished, obviously.
If he's part of this group, certainly they can talk about that and
Thank you.
present their case to the council. Sure. Hello, Bill.
Hello, Mayor, council folks. Bill Feldmeyer, 434 South Alarkin. Is this, am I too close to this?
Sounds good to me.
Okay. All right. Thank you. I appreciate this opportunity, particularly with the surprise that I was going to be the spokesperson for the Kirkendall family. But it is indeed an honor to not just be in front of you, but to speak in behalf of this. And I honestly, I had prepared a number of remarks related to this. But as has been pointed out, Mayor, I don't think it could be framed any better than you have proposed it. And what I do want to say is that through the efforts that I had in preparation for this, I never viewed this as a competitive venture between ourselves and the deceased major. As a matter of fact, I was trying to look at other ways that the major could be honored as well. And one of the things that I did just before I walked into the, to the building here today was walk over to the courthouse. I took a look at the, I've always called it the triangle, and it's the Old Glory Triangle, which lists all of the members of Yavapai County that participated in World War II. And there's a, there's a star, asterisk, star attached to the names on the left-hand side of those that were KIA. And if you take, take a little walk to the other side, the west side of the plaza, the All Veterans Memorial there, that was installed when I was county supervisor, I think my first year in office, back in 1989 or 1990, there's a list there of dozens of KIA's from Yavapai County, not just Prescott, because what we did at the county was make sure that we encompassed veterans countywide, not just those from Prescott, or Camp Verde, or you name it. It was an honor bestowed upon those who sacrificed with their lives countywide. So when we talk about the importance of recognizing the major, he is in fact recognized with a star, and as are others. And my, my personal concern is, what do we do for the others that have stars by their names also? And I think there's a way, and maybe we already have accomplished something that we're concerned about, by recognizing them in at least these two locations. And the big person at the courthouse plaza is Bucky O'Neal. And of course, he gave his life. And we certainly can't forget that. But he's the cornerstone of that courthouse. In any case, we all know what Marlon's, Marlon's achievements were. And as has been pointed out, we wouldn't be here talking about naming a building had he not stepped out in front of that issue and say, let's save that thing. And add that to the other accomplishments that he had over the decades, that he was a strong member of this community and serving on this council twice, and as mayor in three terms. I don't think we can go wrong in naming it after him. And we don't have to change the name Centennial Center either. Marlon D. Kirkendall, Centennial Center. Centennial Center, Marlon D. Kirkendall. Either way works. But it's certainly appropriate that he have his name attached to salvaging that building and making that a huge part of, of not just the history and once, when it had its past glory, but now it's, it's appropriate functioning structure in today's climate for all to see and use. With that, I'm going to, I'm going to pull back on all these, this 20-minute oratory I was going to give you all and say, you know, it's, it's a tough role you got, there's no doubt. But I don't, I don't think you should look at it as, as a struggle and a competition between us and them. You know, I felt a little sideways when this happened, because we were talking about the Kirkendall Center all along. And it wasn't challenging someone who came forward with another idea. It was, how do we recognize that other idea, other idea at the same time? So I'm with you all. Let's, let's get off the idea that, that we're in competition, because that's not it at all, from, at least from our side. With that, I'll say thanks. And I'm going to go back and sit down.
Thanks, Bill. That was quite a heck of ad lib there.
You're welcome. Anything else? Okay.
Mr. Blair, would you like to make some comments?
Good afternoon. And very quickly, I would just suggest to you that knowing, knowing the naming of places in this community have long been going on, not only from people that are dead today, but are alive today. The Jim McCaslin Little Creek Park, named after somebody that did a lot for this community when it came to parks. History will tell you that, you can look at the Bill Keebler Field, who passed away in a car wreck, named after him because of his charge with the Little League. Bill Ballalee Field, the guy that initiated Little League in Arizona. Ken Lindley Field, dying in an accident, and the guy that was the softball coach. So you can go on and on and on and say, whether it's appropriate or not, I would share with you that it comes in many ways, such as the Fine Arts Center that just changed its name to Suzie's, because somebody said, if you change it to Suzie's, we'll give you millions of dollars to do so. So it comes in a lot of different forms and fashions. However, I'd say Frank Shield's name should be across the street on the Frank Shields FTO Reviewing Center, not at the golf course. Marlon Kirkendall, hands down, did that. So not to get emotional about it, but I do, because it means a lot to me. Sorry. But understanding, like Mr. Montoya said, we lose heritage when we don't elevate it. And people don't know whose names who, the Boyd Center Library, yeah, by college, whose name Dr. Boyd, Tenny. Do any of you know that? A little plaque on the wall, or it should say the Boyd Tenny Library on the wall. Keaton and Marston Roads in front of the library were taken down during construction. Who was Keaton and Martin? It was taken down during construction, two officers that lost their lives, and hasn't been erected back. I don't look at this as competition. I have to separate the two, because I didn't know Frank Shields. But if you really want to do something, name it after the righteous people that were involved in it. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Well, I think we've heard, probably Betty, you probably ought to be able to come up and make a couple more comments regarding the discussion and the comments that the council has made regarding your group's proposal for naming of the Centennial Center after Major Frank Shield.
Well, I've certainly worked four and a half years to try to get his name here, even if he isn't remembered by a lot of you. I've gotten to think he's my relative. I don't know what to say today. I know that the people that sent in the applications for Frank Shield, they're all handwritten. And they really mean a lot. I've saved several of them that just came in that are outstanding. I actually had a man write to me from London, who's a World War II historian, and asked if he could send something. So maybe he will. But I can see that you're in a predicament. But I don't want Major Shield to be forgotten. And I think I'd like to work with somebody at the airport that would help me. I've called there before. And I can tell you this, if World War II was before World War I, Frank, it would be Frank Shield's airport, because he is just legendary. And when you think about what he did in school, he formed the first aeronautical program when he was only in junior high. I have letters from the superintendent of schools, Carl Hickerson. And I have about five or six of them. And he was writing to Danny Thomas, no, Danny Freeman. And evidently, Danny Freeman wanted to write about Major Shield to make him known here. And Superintendent Hickerson is writing back, Frank Shield was at the airport from the eighth grade to the 11th, almost every single day on the weekend, wanting to know what he could help with, what was new. And he said, and we ended up taking him up flying. So all through Frank Shield, when you think of Frank Shield's life, he, he right after graduating from high school in 1935, he declined an appointment to West Point. He went two years at Arizona ASU, and knowing that he wanted to be a pilot from the age of seven. And then he went right into the Air Corps, and, and then right into flight school, extensive flight school. He became such a good pilot, he was teaching when the President Roosevelt wanted 100 volunteers. And they went to him first. And he has quite a record of all of the accomplishments that he has done. And I think it's very sad that it's taken this long. And I've tried my damnedest. And that display in the library is outstanding. And I wish it could have stayed up for years. And right now, there's just a little tiny one in the Weston Heritage Center in a cabinet, which I've been asked to take down right now. And so for me, I can't tell you everything that he did. I've read all the medals. I mean, a Silver Star is our third highest medal, to distinguish, the British distinguished cross coming from the British ambassador. And then to build a beautiful camp shield that I gave some of you a packet a year ago, with the pictures and everything in it. When do you hear that a boy from here has a camp, a rest camp in China? You don't. And Chanel thought the best of him in the write-ups, when I did make a mistake the other day, but I won't tell you what it was. Frank Shield flew 200 reconnaissance missions. One of them was 2,200 miles in one day. And he was the one bringing back great photographs so that then they could bomb the eardrums. They, they destroyed all the trucks, everything, and never mind the planes that he shot down. And so I don't know what more I can tell you of that. I just think something's got to be done. And I hope I'm still here to live through it. Getting very up there in age. But I appreciate everything, but in a way disappointed. But what can I do?
Thank you, Betty. I know you've worked hard on this and
Well, I want to, I have something else I'd like to say about a plaque. I was the founder for updating this war memorial. And I worked alone for a whole year doing research and finding those 27 that have never been remembered. And now I have a double Medal of Honor that is not on the plaque that I'll be writing about this month. And I've written about them before. But I don't like the, I know Frank Shield is on those two memorials, and so is in 186 other names. But we don't remember them. We put up five boys killed in Iraq and Afghanistan in 2016 on Flag Day. Have you heard anybody mention them since? I tried to write on the anniversary of every war, that one I did with bringing up the 20 pictures of the boys that were killed in Vietnam. And we don't hear about them. We only hear about the same things, but never somebody like Frank Shield. So anyway, thank you very much.
Thank you, Betty.
Thank you.
So I think we've kind of have an understanding of what the groups are and what the proposals are. And we'll bring this back for a vote on who will be honored at the Centennial Center, I would assume at the next meeting.
Mayor, we do have another public comment.
Oh, okay.
Ted Gamboge.
Ted Gamboge, 1896, Forest View, Prescott. I want to begin by complimenting everyone here. I think we've heard differences of opinions, but I think it's been very civil. When I first moved to Prescott, I was driving around town, listening to KYCA, and I heard this interview. And near the end of the interview, the mayor said, if anybody's new to the neighborhood, stop down and chat. Now, I've lived in maybe 12 different cities, seven different states, two different countries. And my reaction when I heard that would, I could take a quote from the current occupant of 1600 Pennsylvania Avenue, when I say, come on, man. I've never heard of a mayor saying, come on down and chat. So I took him up on the offer, and I did. I learned a lot about Prescott. I learned a lot about Marlon. I learned why Toyota's here today. And since that time, we've talked. We meet here and there and chat a little bit. And then after his passing, I wrote an article in The Courier. And it was the easiest article I ever had to write, because all I had to do was ask people about Marlon, and then sit back and take notes on how they loved him, and how they respected him. Councilman Shishka quoted the Bible earlier, and so I'll counter with another quote from the Bible. Give to Caesar what is Caesar's, and give to the Lord what is the Lord's. Now, as I've heard the discussion today, one of the things I learned when I wrote the article about, I'm not buying any green bananas, was Marlon was instrumental in all the development out in the area of the Centennial Center. And as I've traveled the world with Caterpillar, I can't tell you how many millions of miles, I go through airports. And when I go through airports, I see statues of significant figures like O'Hare Airport, or anywhere around the world. And I'm thinking, Marlon is, is associated with a Centennial Center. But why can't we have a statue of a World War II hero at our new airport, like many other airports do? So with that, I wanted to say that I wholeheartedly endorse naming the Centennial Center after our, our mayor. And I think what I've heard today is, there's other options. And one way to, to Councilman Montoya's point is not to forget our World War II heroes. Let's put a stat, we've got statues all over town. Being a relative newcomer to Prescott, I really admire naming buildings or statues of our past heroes, because our history is important. And sometimes today, we lose sight of history. And sometimes today, we lose sight of history. We, we kind of make it up as we go. And this would be a good way to serve both heroes. Centennial Center for Marlin Kilkendall and a statue at the airport for our World War II hero. Thank you.
Thank you, Ted.
Thanks.
Okay, I think we've concluded our discussions on this item. Let's proceed to the last item on the study session, which is the discussion and presentation regarding the second draft of the 2022 Water Management Policy.
Good afternoon. We're going to talk about water again. Let's see here. If I can get it going. Okay, so on the screen, we have a PowerPoint that we're going to review, the second draft of the Water Management Policy. I will just briefly recap that up to this point, we've had two meetings in January reviewing the first draft of the water policy. The Water Issues Subcommittee met in February and discussed water outside of the city limits. They met again in March to talk about water budgeting, or more so to get a history of water budgeting and how the city's decision and order has progressed over the years. In addition to that, we've received comments from 16 different people in the community related to water policy. A lot of comments from them that we've tried to integrate into the document in order to provide better clarity. However, there are several outstanding items where staff is still seeking direction from council on which way they would like to go. And so we're hoping to receive that from you today so that we can wrap up the second draft of the water policy and post it on the website by the end of this week. So that's kind of where we're headed today. Feel free to ask questions as we go along. You'll notice that the outline of the second draft is considerably different from the first draft, not considerably, but there are changes. And that's due to the public input that we've received. We want to make sure that this policy is clear about what it's intended to do, what it's intended to address. And then we'll talk about some other things that we may address down the road after we adopt this policy as we go along. So here on the screen is basically the new outline, or an updated outline to the policy. It touches on the Prescott Active Management area and what that is, the Water Service area and what that is. We've added a section on regional cooperation. That was based on feedback that we received in the public comments. We're going to talk about the city's assured water supply and its decision and orders and the history of those decision and orders. The general plan and Proposition 400 are still in the draft. Those are key elements. They haven't changed from the first draft, but they're still in the draft. And then we're going to talk about water policy and the history of water policy because the city has made a fundamental shift in how it gives water for new development in this community. And so we're going to talk about that in the policy, how we used to do things, how we're proposing to do things, and why that looks different. Conservation planning has primarily been removed from the document. It was suggested not only from the dais here, but also from public comments that the city adopt a water conservation policy where we set goals, measurable outcomes, and performance criteria. So we're going to propose that we do that, and so as a result, we've removed a lot of that from the document. Then we're going to talk about available water supplies, and then we'll quickly go through the 20 or so water policies that remain in the document.
Mr. Mayor?
Sorry, is there a question?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Rusing, you had some comments.
Thank you. Gwen, since we only have a specific amount of time left, I would like to suggest that maybe we move on to the action items today and start at page 16, Section 7, Policy 1, and just move on to start the discussion on the actual, what I call, action items while we're all here today.
Is that the desire of the council?
I know we only have probably 40 minutes, and the last time we've looked at this policy, both meetings, we took substantially longer than that. So I agree, I think a lot of the introductory references are nice to be included in the policy, but I think we probably would make more legitimate progress if we talked about some of the specifics. So you want to start at page 16?
Well, yeah, 16, new applications, Policy 1.
Well, that's the page before we conclude.
Well, we've got a lot to cover if we're going to cover, you know...
So are you talking about the slide number 16?
No, I'm talking about page 16, and we go up to 26 here. Actually, 30, 34. So, well, not pa, I see what you mean. Yeah, the PowerPoint presentation, new applications where it starts with Policy 1.
Section 7?
Yeah, Section 7.
Do you like me to skip to the, to the end?
Section 7, water policies. Let's just start discussing the water policies.
Mayor, I'm, I'm in favor of doing this as efficiently as possible, and if there's, if we're going to be retreading already treaded ground between slides one and 16, terrific, no problem at all. If there's any highlights that Gwen has for us, I'd be super interested in both the public and myself being made aware of those. And then I really like Mayor Protem Rusing's advice to, to cut to the, the key pieces over which we've had, yes, over which we've had significant discussion before. But if there's any highlights between where you were at and where we're going, I'd love to hear those. Is that all right?
I think probably the most important one, and let me just, let me just go through, I, I think it's important for those of you that are not a part of the Water Issues Subcommittee, that were not at that meeting, then did get the overview and the history, to just lay the groundwork for how the city has fundamentally changed how it tracks its water usage and gives water to new development. I think it's important because it's a key shift in how the city is now working. So from 1999 to 2019, the city allocated water through contracts only from renewable supplies. The decision and order stated that the city would only allocate water for new development from the alternative water block, which was identified here in this, this is our block of water. So in our decision and orders, we have an allocation of water from groundwater, which are developments that were here in 1998, or at least preliminary platted in 1980, 1998, when the, when the area was declared out of safe yield. In addition to that, the city accumulates alternative water from effluent recharge, surface water recharge, long-term storage credits, et cetera. So I think it's important to note that from 1999 to 2019, the city only allocated water for new development from the alternative water supply block. In addition to that, every year, the city set a water budget, every calendar year, based on water that was available in the city's decision and order. And during that time period, the amount of water that was allocated per residential dwelling unit ranged from .36 acre feet per dwelling unit as to as low as .25, and even lower than that for multifamily residential. So in 2017, 18, time varied, city staff, specifically Leslie Grazer, started working on a water resource management model. We hired a consultant, Herb Dishlip, along with Leslie and the water resource staff to create the model, which is different. It's based on utility billing data that comes from water meters. So we have an actual accounting of how much water is used in single-family residential and multifamily residential, as well as commercial. This was also part of the shift from 20, or 1999 to 2019, every residential allocation of water included .10 acre feet for the commercial uses that supported that residential use. The Water Resource Management Model does not do that. It documents how much water is actually used by every water meter in the city, so we have a better understanding of what different types of uses, how much water they actually use. The WORM is based in, on three categories, current use, committed use, and projected uses, or projected demands. It also uses a five-year rolling average water use by user type. So while we have 10 years or more of data in the WORM, the average is determined by the most recent five years. And again, those categories are single-family, multifamily, and commercial. In 2019, when the council at that time was looking at adopting a different water policy, there was a lot of discussion about whether the city could use its groundwater block of water for any uses within the city, even though the amount of groundwater in that block was determined by the subdivisions that were platted at that time or preliminary platted at that time. The city received a letter from the Director of ADWR that reaffirmed the amount of groundwater and alternative water that the city had in its designation and order, which is the 16,507 acre feet that we talk about today. And he also said this, neither ADWR rules nor the City of Prescott's designation restrict where groundwater can be delivered within the City of Prescott's service area. The City of Prescott may approve new plats and agree to new, to serve new customers subject to the conditions described in its designation, and may choose how and where to deliver the water supplies legally available to it, legally available to it within its service area in any year. There is no requirement that the City of Prescott allocate or serve a particular supply, for example, groundwater or alternative water, to a particular customer or development within its service area. So this is where the fundamental shift in the city took place in terms of its water and how we manage our water. At this point, the council adopted a policy that supported the water, the 16,507 acre feet is all one water. That 16,507 acre feet can be used to serve new development, existing development, anywhere that the city determined, as long as we were within ADWR's rules.
All right, Councilman Montoya, you had a question?
I just wanted to, thank you, Mayor. I wanted to agree with Mayor Protem Rusing. I, I think this is really good information. I would encourage my fellow members of council who are not on the Water Issues Subcommittee. I think Gwen sent out a link to that meeting that was about two hours, as I recall, and I think there's a lot of really good information. Speaking of someone who's new to council, I think there are four of us that have served less than a term on this council now, that, you know, it's really worth getting this background and the information. I think we had a really productive discussion on that. So I would just say, if, if you are filled with a lot of questions about this material, I would start by that, doing that. I will say that I've been helped out by Public Works, too. I've spent probably two hours talking to Gwen and Craig about what, the water policy specifically. I also spent about an hour talking to C-WAC. So there are a lot of good resources to get caught up to speed if, if you, my fellow members of council, are not finding all this information jelling with you.
Yeah, that's, that's not the situation with me. I'm willing to have the public hear key highlights as part of this. Thanks.
Councilwoman Hall, you had a question?
Oh, go ahead, Gwen. I was just going to say, this is the last slide, and then I'm going to switch to the policies. But if you have, do you have a question?
Well, mine was sort of back to what you were initially saying about just the big shift, and you, I know you had spoken about it briefly there, but I, it's...
I'm sorry. It's, I'm also, and maybe this is in line, maybe a little bit with what Councilman Tenny is saying, is, is the understanding for everyone who maybe doesn't attend the Water Council Subcommittee, you know, that doesn't understand what the big shift means to the public and what that looks like and how it changes for, you know, even your day-to-day to all of our constituents' day-to-day.
So in 2019, the council at that time adopted a different kind of water policy, and water service was then provided from any water source within the DNO based on the letter from ADWR, either groundwater or alternative water supplies, but it did not include the Big Chino Water Ranch because that water supply is not physically available. The city moved away from contracts for water unless they were associated with an annexation or development agreement into a process where water service applications and reviews were either approved by council action or issued instead of a building permit. There was no water budget during the last two and a half years, and single-family residential was designated at .17 acre feet per single-family home and .12 acre feet per multifamily dwelling unit based on water, or based on water bills from a similar facility. And this is information that comes out of the Water Resource Management Model that tells us that the citywide average for single families is .17, and the citywide average for multifamilies is .12. Even under the current policy, no water outside the city limits was allowed with the exception of existing contracts that are in place or anything that was defined as a political subdivision or an IGA with a, and I'm sorry, an IGA with a political subdivision. So this is our available water supply. Everyone said, well, how much water do we have? How much water can we put potentially into water budgets? So essentially, in the 2009 decision and order, which is what we're working under today, I'd like to reiterate that the 2022 decision and order is in review with the state. It'll be there probably until the end of the year, at least, before we hear back from them. So under the 2009 DNO, the city currently has 16,507.44 acre feet available to it. And the Water Resource Management Model that was submitted as part of the DNO shows our current committed and projected demands at 14,529 acre feet. Now, you notice I have it highlighted here that the quantities are provisional based on ADWR's review of our decision and order, but essentially, there's about 1,978 acre feet of water available potentially for water budgeting. We're going to talk about that in one, a couple of the policy statements.
And Gwen, we're assuming that our decision and order application will be approved as submitted, but there's a possibility that ADWR may amend that or require changes to it. So if we were to adopt a water policy today, next month, next week, whatever, it still could be subject to a change because of ADWR's determination of our DNO application.
That is correct. And that's why I have, have that highlighted up there. You're correct, Mayor. So Policy Number One, I, I did highlight in green the things that I changed, so it would make it easier for you to see in the policies, the things I changed. In Policy One, we added the words "in conjunction with" in order, so it basically, it says that a water service application shall be submitted in conjunction with a formal site plan, a preliminary or final plat. So they would be submitted concurrently, reviewed concurrently, and approved by council In Policy Two, we were asked to provide clarification on multifamily dwelling units, if that meant buildings, projects. It actually is a reflection of the number of dwelling units within a multifamily use. So it would be subject to, administrative approvals would be subject to up to eight multifamily dwelling units, or four single-family residential units that are not subject to the subdivision rules, and any non-residential project with an estimated water use of an acre foot or less would be approved administratively by staff, and those administrative approvals would be included in the biannual water budget. That was, that language was added again for clarity. Are there any questions on Policy One or Two?
Well, the four single-family number was determined because at five single-family units, it would trigger the subdivision considerations.
So Mayor, there are two things that trigger the subdivision rules. One is the construction of a, of a street, and the second is five or more, division of five or more lots. So if either of those occur, it would trigger the subdivision rule, and it would not be administratively approved. But if there was a lot split that was four lots or less, it could be administratively approved.
Okay, I think that's appropriate. Any other questions? No? Okay. Proceed.
Moving on. So Policy Three has to do with estimating water usage shall be based on the usage by similar project type as determined in the WORM, unless a water demand analysis is requested by the city. The WORM water use estimates are updated in January of each year, and we added the word that the use estimates would be presented to the Water Issues Subcommittee and the council annually. So we had in there "or," but we were asked to present it to both groups, so we'll present it to both groups. We also added some language that water use estimates shall be adjusted annually as projected in the WORM in acre feet per year. And what's highlighted there in blue are the numbers that we are currently using in 2022 and would continue to use in 2022, and then those will be updated in 2023.
And how do we determine? And how do we determine 1.5 acre-feet per acre of landscaped area?
So the 1.5 acre-feet per year of acre of landscaped area is the multiplier that's used by the Arizona Department of Water Resource for outdoor watering. And so that's the number that we are emulating here. We believe it's a conservative number, but a good number.
And is that number determined from throughout the state?
I believe it's a statewide average, yes.
So in active management areas where there's particular concern about conservatively managing our water, shouldn't that number be a little bit lower?
It can be lower, but again, we were suggesting to you that you use ADWR's number. If you'd like us to look into that further, we can.
Well, I think a couple of the proposals of development that we've seen even recently have more of a commitment for low-water use, low-water landscaping, or very little landscaping. And I think that could be a number that we could pare down a bit.
So we don't use this number in natural landscaped areas, undisturbed areas. We only use it where they've disturbed the natural landscaping, it can't come back, and they've planted new plantings from the low-water drought plant list. But again, the City of Prescott uses ADWR's low-water drought tolerant plant list, and their recommendation is 1.5 acre-feet per acre of landscaped area, based on their planting.
Well, I know when we were landscaping the new airport terminal, I was looking at some of the plans that the landscape contractor put in, and they weren't even on the low-water use plant palette. So that happened even with our own development, and I think it's important that we make sure that the low-water use plant palette is, in fact, expected and included in any permitting.
Anything else on Policy Three?
Councilwoman Hall.
Thank you. So Gwen, I see on here, obviously, we talk about the residential and landscaping. Can the worm be used, and maybe this is a broader question, but for specific commercial applications? Do we have a confident enough number to say this type of business is going here, they'll use this much water?
So, for example, if a new grocery store came to town, we would take all the water meters from all the grocery stores that we currently have in town, and we can see based on their square footage of their building and how much water they use, we can make a good determination of how much water a new grocery store might use. So yes, we can use the worm to do that by specific types of businesses. It requires a little bit more work by the staff to specifically pull out those kinds of uses, but the information is there, and we can do that.
Okay, so that would, I guess, roll into Policy Four, so if you want me to wait, it just, I'm just trying to understand the reasoning if we can determine the numbers in the worm, why we're requiring commercial properties to have a civil engineer.
So you want me to move to Four?
That's, yeah, to the mayor, obviously.
So we did reverse the language in Policy Four. Initially, Policy Four was written that a demand analysis would be required first. But after discussions here at the dais and some of the comments we received from the public, it made more sense that if we have a use in the worm, that we would use that first. We always allow, especially in commercial, we would allow a new use to provide water bills from an existing facility they might have in another location, because that would be the most accurate way to determine how much water they might use. And so we reversed the language in Policy Four to say that if a water use estimate cannot be determined by the worm or by a similar facility, then the water demand analysis may be required. And those are always performed by a civil engineer. That's the way that, we don't accept them by, you know, anything other than existing facility utility bills from the worm or by a civil engineer.
Yeah, that's wonderful. Thank you. That was, I think, the initial policy. We weren't really defaulting to the worm, right? We were defaulting to the engineer.
We were.
I think that's a wonderful change. Thank you very much.
I have a comment. You know, we have some adverbs here. We kind of switch back and forth between "may" and "shall," and, you know, they have different meanings. And so would it be better, instead of saying "may," to say "shall"? And also with Policy Number Five, the city "shall," so that it's a lot more clear to the applicant what's going to be required, because that kind of leaves it up to, kind of up in the air. Some person's gonna be making a decision. He may, may not, but with these parameters, I think putting "shall" in might be a little more clearer.
City Attorney, what's your opinion on that?
For Policy Four, that makes a lot of sense. Of course, you're gonna require it anyway, so the "may" can become a "shall." I don't know about the second one, Gwen. Do you have any thoughts on that? Because that seems to allow for a little more discretion.
If you use the word "shall," then they have to do it. There is no question.
Right.
In the case of a cost-benefit analysis, I don't believe there would be very many situations where that might be necessary. And based on the scope of the project and the impacts to the community, the benefits the city might receive in exchange for a new commercial business or something coming into town, you would want to have some discretion on whether you did that or not.
Yeah, Mayor, could I say something? Excuse me, Gwen.
Yeah, go ahead.
My issue with that whole situation of "shall require" is that, say you're a small commercial operation, it "shall" require you to do a cost-benefit analysis? That may make the difference between you deciding to do it or not.
Are we talking about Four or Five?
I think we're interchanging them.
Yeah, both.
Councilwoman Shishka's comments just now were about Five, correct?
About Five. That's what we're talking about. The other one was a usage estimate.
I'm sorry, I kind of got ahead of myself, but on Policy Five, it says "any project," and that's another thing that's kind of wide open and vague, and I think it should read "commercial-industrial subdivisions," you know, the larger projects, you know, not the small guy like you were saying. But, you know, I think that we "shall" require a cost-benefit analysis, not just for any project, but for commercial-industrial subdivisions and the big users. And also, the cost-benefit analysis shall be used by the city to help evaluate. Because I just think when you're trying to come up with a document like this, there's just too many "may's" in here, and it just gets vague, and there's just too many questions raised, whether you're gonna do it or not.
How often does this come up?
I've only seen a cost-benefit analysis when the city annexes large pieces of land for residential subdivision.
So the chance of this applying to a small development are almost zero?
Correct.
And I think "shall" being applied here makes sense, because it would be a very substantial development.
Well, if you left "shall" in and you left in "any project," then you would be doing it for everything.
You need to clarify "any project." That's kind of vague to me. "Any project," what does that mean? So we need to define that, you know, commercial-industrial subdivisions, annexations.
What would a commercial...
Councilwoman Hall.
I'm sorry, excuse me.
That's okay. Do you wanna go?
I just had a question. What would a commercial-industrial subdivision be?
No, three separate things, not just one thing.
Well, but how often do we have a commercial subdivision where there's three separate entities all in the same, asking for water all at the same time?
No, I meant a commercial project or an industrial project or a subdivision or an annexation "shall" have a cost-benefit analysis.
So I think if I can maybe bring it back, we can either leave the language as it is and leave it at the discretion of staff when a project is substantial enough to warrant a cost-benefit analysis, or we would have to define thresholds. In other words, if a project is more than 20 acres, if it requires more than 30 acre-feet of water, something, we would have to have one or the other. And I believe that you have some very good professional people here that have historically brought cost-benefit analyses forward. When it's warranted, it's a substantial cost to do that. When we ask an applicant to do that, only larger projects would be required or asked to do that.
Well, and my comment just initially was back to Policy Four, and I mean, obviously, I think you're right, Gwen, about Five. Go one or the other. Either itemize them as being larger projects and being specific about that and then requiring it, but like you said, if staff's already doing that, then we can leave it vague, and it's, you know, just any project, and then it's at your discretion. But I think it's dangerous if we change Policy Four to "water demand analysis shall be required," because then we get into the same thing Councilmember Shishka was talking about, which is, do we actually have a mom-and-pop shop hiring a civil engineer because we don't know how much water usage they're gonna be using? So I would, I know you referred to Policy Four and Five, but I'm not sure if that was... we could leave Policy Four as "may." I think that certainly makes more sense than leave Policy Five as it is without the "shall" and leave it at staff discretion.
I think Legal just said that he thought that "shall" was better than "may." Did you?
How often do we do these?
So are we talking about...
Water demand analyses.
Okay. Could we go back to Policy Four? I don't mean to be disrespectful here. In Policy Four, if we cannot determine something from the worm or a similar use, they will provide a demand analysis. So if you would like me to change "may" to "shall" under Policy Four, that makes sense.
I think it makes sense there.
Because they have no, they really have no discretion.
There is no other option.
You will do this, or you're not gonna give water.
You have no discretion, and you have no benchmark, right? I mean, you don't have anything to gauge your usage again.
So it would be a very unusual application.
Sure.
Right. And then maybe in Policy Five, we have to determine some benchmark to trigger that expensive cost-benefit analysis.
Yeah. What did you guys end up estimating FedEx usages?
We did it on water usage from a similar facility.
Just, how much?
Four point something.
Oh, it was just over four acre-feet.
Okay, the reason I, okay, so four acre-feet, would you, as a collective, think that is a substantial project in terms of water usage? Because in my mind, it's a substantial project in terms of usage of the land.
Right.
And a hiring, but four acre-feet is a low threshold to make somebody go through a cost-benefit analysis.
Size.
Yes.
Right.
So that's slightly complicated, is my point, because FedEx is a really pretty big user in theory, right?
Does Attachment Seven get us anywhere? What is, there's a parenthetical, and they're gonna have an attachment.
It's an outline of the information that has to be provided in the cost-benefit analysis.
Mayor, can I suggest that we leave the wording in Policy Five as-is? We hire professionals with long experience, and they have historically done a good job determining that. Sounds like it's a rare situation in which they would need to make a determination. And my experience so far is when they're on the fence about something, they always bring it to us, or they err on the side of caution.
Well, I may not agree with that assessment. If we look at the numbers on some of the developments that we're looking at between 20 and 21, after this water policy had been dramatically changed, we're seeing a substantial increase in administratively-approved projects that I think warrant that we have a more definitive establishment of benchmarks in the water policy that we're considering here under Policy Five.
Okay. We're gonna have subjective language regardless of what we do. My suggestion is that as-is is okay, but I'm totally okay with other opinions as well.
Because I think this would, it'd be clear that we're only requiring this on very substantial projects that are unusual in nature or they're very large. And with that, I think a cost-benefit analysis would not be a burdensome requirement for a major development.
How many projects of a commercial nature do we have that use more than 10 acre-feet of water?
Well, again, a car wash. Yeah, a car wash would be one.
I'm trying to find some number that would be somewhat reasonable, and is there a lot that use more than 10?
No.
Other than a car wash?
A car wash is obviously a high-water user.
Are they 10 or more?
Yes. They're closer to 15 to 20.
16.
So if you establish a threshold of something around 10, you would bring high users like a car wash forward, but pretty much every, like a FedEx, you could build two FedExes for 10.
Yes.
The water use. Yep. Councilwoman Montoya.
Yeah, I just wanted to say, I think the threshold, since this is a water policy, shouldn't be land use, but it should be water, right? Obviously, FedEx doesn't rise. Like, I mean, I think if I recall some of the early discussions that council was having around the FedEx facility before it was finalized, they were overestimating their water usage by a lot.
Right.
And so I think it...
Has to be water.
Yeah. So my guess is that the chances of, if we move forward to "shall," like, that's, you know, I think that's warranted, and I think if we establish a metric of an aqua, or acre-feet per year threshold on Policy Five, I think if, even as Michael's suggesting, 10, I would bet that it's not gonna be that often that that demand and that cost-benefit analysis is gonna happen.
Councilman Shishka.
Thanks, Mayor. Councilman Montoya pretty much covered it. As long as you establish a threshold, I have no problem with "shall."
Well, if we talk about nature of business that we have concerns about, we could take the average for a car wash, or there are other businesses like that are high-water consumers that you're worried about. We can back into something because we have the data from similarly situated businesses.
We do.
And then it's a matter of approving those, but then monitoring their actual use.
Yep.
Okay. All right, we're just moving right along here, aren't we?
Moving along. So Policy Six, the area is highlighted in green. Applications expire one year after the date the application was submitted. If a building permit or plat for the project describing the application does not move forward through the review process, be addendized for the Water Issues Subcommittee or be administratively approved. So we're just trying to make sure that applications don't just sit and hold water, rather opens the water up for other people to use if they're not gonna move forward. Under Policy Seven, it has to do with an existing entitlement to water from the city in a contract. That entitlement must be fully utilized before the city will consider approving additional water. Any proposal to increase the number of lots or volume of water shall require a submission of a new water service application for the revised project, which will be evaluated according to the then-current water management policy and water budget if applicable. So that's the new language for those.
Mayor Protam Rusing.
Yeah, I have a question. You know, scientifically, data-wise, volume of water, I think, should be eliminated and replaced with acre-feet per year, instead of just a general volume of water.
So I would agree with you, except some of the historic contracts allocated the water sometimes in gallons. They're not always allocated in acre-feet.
You could probably convert them, couldn't you? Gallons? Convert them to .17 or whatever.
If it's the council's desire to have a take, we can do that.
I'd like to see some consistency. And then also, you know, in the back of my mind is always Petrogriff Point, where there were seven lots, and they were, one lot was created, and it was administratively-approved, and unfortunately, the water increased, water use increased. So I would like to say, any proposal to increase the number of lots, I'd like to say, increase or decrease the number of lots, shall require a submission of a new water service application, just kind of to eliminate any loopholes, just mainly any change would require a submission of a new water service agreement.
If the volume of water increases?
No, any proposal.
Because if you're gonna shrink, if the lots are gonna be merged and the volume of water goes down or stays the same, I don't know that you would want those proposals, because those are conservation forward versus conservation backwards. If you are gonna use more water, I think I could see that, but if you're gonna use less water, I don't know why you would bring the proposal back. But if you're going to use less water, I don't know why you would bring the proposal back.
Well, all I know is there is a decrease in the number of lots and it.
And a substantial increase in the usage of the water.
Yeah. And so it was, it was just kind of a huge problem and I'm just trying to eliminate that from happening again.
And I think I can amend this language perhaps to say that any proposal to increase or decrease the number of lots that results in an increase in the volume of water shall require submission of a new water service application to resolve that issue.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments on these? Moving on. Policy eight has to do with the redevelopment of property that would result in less total water use. They will be required to submit a water service application so that we can track them. These requests will be reviewed and tracked administratively. All such requests will be presented to the water issue subcommittee and the council biannually as a discussion and information item only and shall not be included in the water budget. Any request for additional water shall be included in the water budget. So again, if they're using the same or less, we'll track it. If they want more water, they have to come back through the process like anyone else.
Good.
Under policy nine, property that holds a contract within the city to receive water will also be required to submit a water service application. They will be reviewed and tracked administratively. All such requests will be presented to the subcommittee and the council biannually as a discussion and information item and shall not be included in the water budget.
Councilwoman Hall.
So since the last, you know, at this, I understand there's been water budget, but can we address why these have been changed to now require service applications? Both of these policies in lieu of previously, when they were first proposed, they were not required?
So some of that was some very good feedback we received from the public about how we would track them. And they never submit just a water service application. They're also submitting preliminary plat or a final plat or a building permit or some other sort of application. So if this information is provided to us as part of their project and the review of their project and approval, then we can track how much water is being used as each part of their project progresses forward. So it's about submitting information and less about being approved. They're already approved under their contract. We're just administratively tracking it.
Okay, so is there, is there any way to? I guess when I read new application, that means it can be approved or denied. So I mean, so there won't be any review from staff necessarily. It's just for information, data tracking.
It will be reviewed to make sure that it's consistent with the approved contract and then approved as part of the overall project with whatever other components of their project there are.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you.
Any other questions on eight or nine?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Rusing.
Yes, I've noticed in this document, you keep referring to the water city limits, like in policy nine, within the city limits. But what about the water service area? It seems to me we should include them both to be clear because we do have a water service area boundary that includes water outside the city limits, but within that boundary. You know, for example.
I think that makes sense.
Yeah.
Under policy nine, we can change that. You are correct, Mayor Protem.
Mountain Club, you know.
Just the service delivery area.
All lands outside the city limits have contracts. That's historically always been that way and is that way today. So we'll change policy nine to say city's water service area.
Yeah, city limits and water service area, just to include everything.
Anything else? Okay. Policy 10, all new development projects shall connect to and be served by the city sewer prior to physical delivery of any water service by the city. This next part is a little bit different. We talked the last time about 70% of the water sold being returned as wastewater to the city water reclamation facility. Under new residential development, we know under building codes, low water plantings, water cens requirements, that residential uses are returning 70% or more of the water back to the water reclamation facility. To be more clear, staff changed this language to say that new non-residential development projects must return no less than 70% of the water sold as wastewater to the city water reclamation facility. Comments about that?
Is that number even lower than we could legitimately expect with modern construction processes and fixtures and appliances, et cetera?
Staff does believe that 70% is low for new construction. Our citywide average varies between 65 and 67% right now. That also includes over 3,000 homes that are on septic tanks.
Right.
So we are confident that our return rate for new construction is higher and potentially much higher than the 70%. And as I've mentioned previously, we're working on the wastewater return flow meters that are out in the new development areas to try to get you a more accurate number.
When do you expect that that data would be available? Because, I mean, like everything else with this, with the worm, maybe what's a better way to do this is to wait till the data shows up and then figure out from the data what's an appropriate percentage. Do we have, do we know when we think we'll have this better information?
We do not know. We're working on it, but we do not.
I mean, like a year, six months?
It won't be a year. I would hope within six months we would have an answer.
Well, maybe by the time we get our decision in order.
We'll have a better.
Finalized, we will have that number and we could make it, we could move it up.
I think that makes sense, Mayor, based on real information, right?
But if we're going to adopt it today, then probably 70% is a reasonable number.
It's probably, yeah.
I have, I have a comment. It says here, all new development projects. Does that include residential and non-residential projects?
Yes.
So do we need to just assume that that includes all residential and non-residential?
All new development projects. I can make it more clear if you would like.
Okay.
It might be better, the language might be better.
Right, add a residential and commercial.
Yeah, I think I would say that all new development projects and not break it down by type of project.
Yeah, residential and non-residential. And then if we say that, what about the historic and reserved water that's out there? I mean, are they excluded from this because they're not new? Is that it?
That is correct, Mayor Protem. And we do have a section in our code 2-1-76 that we adopted a few years ago that says if you're not immediately adjacent or abutting a sewer main, you do not have to connect to sewer. So that would apply to folks who already have water that's been allocated to them under existing contracts.
Okay, thank you.
Policy 11 has to do with the water budget. We didn't change policy 11. It has to do with setting the water budget biannually at the meetings in June and December. Under policy 12, there was quite a bit of discussion about whether remaining unallocated water budget balances being preserved and carried over to the next budget period. Staff is seeking direction on whether you want to leave that language in or take that language out.
My question is, is that, can you, can you keep track of that very easily or would it create some accounting nightmare?
Well, we're fairly intelligent. I think we can figure it out. If you, if you want it in, we, you know, we can figure it out. It's about what the desire of the council is to do.
Councilwoman Hall.
So one of the questions I have, Mr. Mayor, how, at what point in this process are we determining these numbers? I feel like the number of acre feet that we're going to allow during a six month period is going to have major implications on the residential and commercial side.
We're just getting to that point now and here we are, two minutes to three.
Oh, okay.
So I think you're right. I think that requires a bit of a debate and a decision on how we determine how that number is generated and what the number, the best number should be. And then as we go forward, we'll probably have to maybe even modify the number that we decide on now as we see how effective it is in generating development guidelines. Councilman Montoya.
I just, go ahead. I just, I know I have made this point a couple of times and this will be probably the third or fourth time since water issues have committee meetings. But when we talk about the water budget, we are talking about property that does not have a contract or development agreement, correct?
Correct.
Like the universe that we're actually talking about budgeting for water purposes is relatively small in terms of the water service area of Prescott. Is that correct?
It is. And as the mayor mentioned, this is kind of a big topic to discuss. So I don't know if you want to keep going or roll this to the next meeting because this is a, there are going to be quite a bit of discussion about this. And I've got some more information on some of my future slides about.
Maybe next time.
What we have done and what we might look at. But you are correct, Councilwoman Montoya, this water budget is for lands that either are not in a subdivision, don't have an existing contract with the city through a development agreement or a special historic agreement or a reservation. So there's going to be very few projects that will actually come forward to the council as part of this water budget moving forward.
Thank you.
Councilman Shishka.
Thanks, Mayor. Real quick, that was that figure you gave us of about 1,860 acre feet or so, right?
1,978.
1,978 is what this budget will be dealing with.
That was a good year, by the way.
Yeah, it was.
Agreed.
I think we probably ought to stop it here and then take the rest of this at the next opportunity to have a study session because this is going to take quite a bit of discussion.
Agreed. Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, would you like to take the public comment that you have?
Yeah, let's take a public comment at this time.
Howard Mechanic.
Mayor and Council, the way the city's handled water outside the water service area in the past has been a huge problem. In the past, most water deals have had three major issues. They haven't helped us manage growth or manage our aquifer or manage to minimize the, or manage to maximize the benefits for the city and the community. Those issues apply to both annexed areas and to areas not annexed. Do you know how many of those issues will be solved by the proposal to totally outlaw water outside the water service area? None. None of those three issues will be resolved by that proposal. There's been a lot of confusion about this issue, which is understandable because it's counterintuitive to say that if the city sells more water, it could help to minimize the increase in their overdraft and minimize the increase in growth. To totally prohibit water outside the water service area is not a solution. To solve all three issues, the solution is to provide water the right way. Let me address the three issues. If done the wrong way, as in the past, providing water outside the city limits will promote more growth. But done the right way, it could easily help manage growth. If a property is outside the city limits, the city has absolutely no ability to manage its growth. But if a property owner requests city water, then the city can tell the property owner what it desires as far as the number of units. By doing this, we could assure that there be no more units built than we want and certainly less than possibly otherwise. The second argument against providing water outside city limits is based on the claim that such a policy will interfere with efforts to manage our aquifer. Quite the opposite. If we have the option to provide water to units that would otherwise be on wells and septics and we require those units to accept strong water conservation measures such as stringent restrictions on outdoor water use, we'll capture and recharge about 70% of the water. So while a new home on city water will increase the overdraft, the increase will be only a fraction of the increase that would happen if the well was on, if they were on well and septic. And the third problem is that past deals have not produced maximum benefits for the city and community. For most water requests, the city never asked for anything from the developer. But in the AED deal, the city asked for and got quite a bit. And looking back at the AED deal, we should have learned a big lesson. So what is the big lesson? It's that city water service is extremely valuable to developers who would otherwise have to build with wells and septic. The lesson is that if the city just asks, just insists, it will get quite a bit from a developer in exchange for getting water service. And that explains why AED was willing to dedicate 453 acres of valuable land for open space because they got city water service and it was that valuable to them. When other people come to the city asking for water.
Let's conclude your remarks.
Okay. I'm just suggesting that you leave it open. Consider applications for outside the city water service area. Just consider, you don't have to approve them. Thank you.
I would just like to comment that if AED had the option to stay in the county and we had the policy to furnish water outside the city limits, they could have stayed in the county. They could have gotten city water and sewer and they wouldn't have had to have saved the dells. They could have bulldozed the dells.
Well, you wouldn't have to provide water to them unless you wanted to.
Well, the way the council was, you never know.
Okay, we're done here.
Tom Rusing.
Thank you. Any, okay, go ahead.
Tom Rusing. I have a concern and a question to the staff if they could actually short describe what build out actually is and what does it cover and represent. I and others are concerned that that number may not actually be accurate. The actual demand when the general plan area is actually built out and the city infills and upsizes seems to be higher than that estimate. And it is critical for the citizens and city council to have a realistic and accurate information to make the best decisions. In addition, the city is waiting for the DNO to be approved by ADWR and there are many that are concerned that the number that we look at at 16,000 acre plus feet may well be decreased. And therefore, I think it's important that we know that information before making major decisions in our water policy. The final, because I think those decisions shouldn't be made if there's significant uncertainty of what the water is and we have to realize that that's actually legal or paper water and not necessarily real water. I'd also like to refer the council and the public to the comments made in the Seawag's statement on the new water policy that they published on February 7th of '22. And also a talk of the town that was in the newspaper recently that carefully described their concerns about the proposed water policy and our water resource. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else?
That's all, Mayor.
All right, that concludes our study session. It's now, what, eight minutes after three? We'll take about five minutes and reconvene at, oh, let's make it 3:15 and have our regular voting session. Thank you.